Start with the pledge of diligence. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fruen.
Here.
Councilmember Mohan.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here. And close session report.
There's no reportable action tonight.
Thank you. We have three ceremonial items. The first one is item three, recognition of April as the Fair Housing Month. Presentation by, I think, Project Sentinel. Do we have Grace and Grace Gracia and Adrian Solis? From the Fair Housing Outreach Coordinators for Project Sentinel.
Good evening. Not sure if the slides ready to go up?
Yes, I will share my screen. Should appear momentarily. Video, can you toggle the presentation? There we go. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So, on behalf of Project Sentinel, we thank the city of Cupertino for your ongoing support and partnership and continual fight to eliminating housing discrimination. Just a little bit of background of who we are. We are a nonprofit agency that been around for over fifty years, serving all of Santa Clara County, Sacramento County, and Sanes Law. All of our services that we provide are free to the community regardless of income or immigration status. Next slide. At Project Sentinel, we have over three different departments. The first department is tenant landlord, where they provide, you know, resolutions and disputes, including free mediation and counseling to the community of anyone who has any issues with their landlord, his rents, security deposits. Our housing counseling department also provides first-time homebuyer classes, guidances in regards to foreclosure prevention, financial credit counseling, and those type of areas. And then lastly, the fair housing department, which Grace and I are included, we investigate and educate the community about their fair housing rights and investigate housing discrimination.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Last month, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development received direction from DOGE to terminate grant funding, which impacted sixty fair housing agencies across the nation who combat housing discrimination. The elimination of HUD's federal funding poses significant challenges to Project Sentinel's efforts in ensuring equitable housing opportunities. We appreciate the city of Cupertino for promoting fairness and equity in housing. Your endorsing efforts help educate residents of their respective fair housing rights and responsibilities. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Project Sentinel, for your work. You're helping not only tenants and landlords to reach an agreeable settlement. So, and then helped a lot of people who are housing insecure. And so we have a proclamation for them. Yeah, thank you for all your work for residents and thank you for providing that in our area.
Of course.
So let's come closer. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, if there's anything we need, you need us to help.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, let us know. Yeah. So if there's anything you need us to help, let us know. Yeah, thank you. So, next is recognition of April as the Donate Life Month. We will have a presentation from WOHA Community Engagement Specialist with Donor Network West. Hi, welcome.
Hi, good evening. No presentation today. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Hua. I am the Community Engagement Specialist for the South Bay at Donor Network West. We're a nonprofit located in San Ramon, California. I want to thank you all so much for being here today. April is nationally recognized as Donate Life Month. Your presence means a great deal as we honor the gift of life and the incredible generosity of organ, eye, and tissue donors. We are deeply grateful for your support in spreading awareness and celebrating hope during Donate Life Month. As the organ procurement organization in Northern California and Northern Nevada, it is our mission to bring hope for people who are on the transplant waitlist and to honor the legacy of the selfless donors who make their second chance at life a reality, many of whom are right here in the Santa Clara County. As the Community Engagement Specialists, I am honored to be an advocate and a partner with you and the mission to save and heal lives. I want to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude to Mayor Chow and her team. During Donate Life Month, your unwavering support and dedication to raising awareness about donation has been truly remarkable. Your commitment and efforts in recognizing April as Donate Life Month has undoubtedly made a significant difference for this crucial need. Thank you for your partnership, your compassion, and your dedication to saving lives. Together, we can continue to spread awareness and bring great impact of advocacy and hope for those waiting on the transplant waiting list and their second chance at life. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for your work. I believe I'm an organ donor. I hope everyone sign up as organ donor. Yeah, so how do people sign up?
Yeah.
I remember it was at the driver's license.
Yeah, so for more information, you can visit us at donornetworkwest.org or you can visit your local DMV as well.
Okay, thank you. Let's present the proclamation. Thank you. Anything we can do to help bring awareness, more people to sign up, let us know.
We'll do.
Thank you. Okay, seven. The next item is recognition of April 1st as the Odisha Day in the city of Cupertino. We have the Mahash Makala and the Reno Row from Cupertino-Bushina-Urbana-Swahatchi Sister City Initiative.
Hello. Some slides we had, you bring it up. In the meantime, I would like to thank Mayor Liang Chow, Vice Mayor Kitty Moore, J.R. Fruen, Sheila Mohan, Mr. Wang, and the city staff for this opportunity and proclamation for the Odisha Day. It is an emotional day for me in a personal way as well. My great-grandfather was one of the chief advisors for the king of Odisha, and he fought the World War I, and that's how he built a relationship with the British government and was influential in forming the Odisha State based on a language called Odiya. So this is a real emotional day, and I want to really thank the mayor for her bold decision to give the proclamation to the sister city and the Odisha Day formation. And I have with me our Rena, of course, and Wendell as well. He's a board member. Another couple of them couldn't show up, they were busy. And without that much ado, I would like to just show a few slides. I put the slides together as your, for your files, but the sister city was, the discussion started in 2009 and 2011 was formally formed. And we can see, and I just want to go, I don't have much time, so I want to just go to the slide number nine. You can review the slides later, but I want to just, you can go one by one. Yeah, this is the only sister city of Odisha in whole of US. There's no other sister city in whole of US. So this is like the gateway to the US as well as Bhuvneshwar is to the gateway to India. So, this is some kind of a timeline that we have done, how we formed it and other things. Over the years, we have been slowly building the sister city. Can you go to the next slide, please? So this is one of the initiatives, this has been very popular initiative and very, where the city of Cupertino and government, we as sister city, do our Independence Day celebrations, and it has been recognized in Odisha and in India. It's a pretty good initiative done by the city. Really thankful for that. And the next slide, please. And this is the, what we do is the cultural festival that we do, what we call Heritage India Fair, Konarak Festival, which is a dance festival that we do in the memorial park to involve the community across the diaspora and across the communities so that there's kind of a, what we call inter-exchange of community and culture and art and those kind of forms. And again, we get very good support from the city. We really appreciate that. And we had an artist come from Odisha, Swayam Padi, he's a pop, very number one singer in Odisha, as well as we involve the local artists from Cupertino and the Bay Area area who perform and exhibit. And this is a very good platform for them to get, especially we involve the youngsters so they get admission to colleges, and it's a pretty good experience for them. And we had the council general of India always visit whenever we have the India, from the government of India representation as well. Next slide, please. This is the, one of the first ones we did when our, first time when the congressman got elected, Rohana was there as our chief guest, and he also loves the concept of the sister city exchange where we have community, what we call really grassroots-level exchanges between the two countries. And I think that's the best way to do it when you can exchange ideas, thoughts, culture, art, education, and everything. And we have a council general there as well. So please, next slide, please. And this is the festival. Yeah, this is the, what we did, one more festival, what we involved the eastern part of India, which is typically neglected, but this is very good art, so we did it in the Heritage India Fair. What we call Pura means in English east, eastern part of India. We had a joint celebration with the council general supporting that event as well. Yeah, that is like, next slide, please. And this is the student exchange program that we did, where students came in from Bhuvneshwar to Cupertino and went to Lynbrook School and stayed with the families here in Cupertino. And they're amazing experience. Whenever I go, their parents come and meet me now because the kids are in, they're not kids anymore, they're working or in colleges outside. So they're all thankful for that experience they got in Cupertino. And that was, I think, Darcy, that was the mayor at that time. Next slide, please. Then we did a, during the COVID times, we did something called a seminar between US and India. We involved a lot of folks, and we did what we call business exchange, art exchange discussions because we couldn't really meet. It was online event, virtual event. Next, next slide, please. This is the recent visit. This was a pretty hectic event with Mayor Sheila Mohan, the ex-mayor, Mayor Sheila Mohan, who really visited, we visited the mayor of Bhuvneshwar. We visited some member of parliament or what we call here senators. We met some local community, local leaders there. They're very, very appreciative. And we also had our city manager there, who was there as well with us in doing the trip. And it was a pretty hectic trip, and it was a very nice experience for all of us. We visited the temples, we visited the sites, we visited a school as well. I think this, I think the next slide has the, next slide, please. Oh, no. This is actually very rare. This is the king of a place called Puri, which is a very religious place, but he's called the Puri Gajna. He doesn't really meet with people, but he definitely met with us, and we were really honored when we gifted them a carpet from the city of Cupertino, which he said he's going to put it on the wall of the, he's a king, like, he's pretty much a very well-respected individual in whole of India, you can say. But a very, very well-educated, very learned person. So it was a pretty good experience. It's called Raja Gajpati. Next slide, please. Then we went to a school called ODM School, and we, because these are the kids who would be coming. We were evaluating couple of schools who will be visiting this year in Cupertino. And we had a very good experience and under, and fortunately, I'm also the board member for the Chamber of Commerce. So we organized a meetup with the Indian Chamber of Commerce, which is again based in Bhuvneshwar. So they did a very good event, and a lot of people were interested to come to Cupertino, and they were asking what facilities can the, in terms of economic development, if we come and set up a restaurant or a office, what kind of facilities we get. So we have to do something about the economic development setup here and set up a process wherein we can create that pipeline in the future.
Mayor, we're at five minutes, just to let you know.
Okay, so thank you again. I really appreciate it. I'm sorry I went out of the time, but we've done a lot of things over the period, and thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Okay, yeah, thank you for the amazing activities you have done. Let's present the proclamation.
Thank you.
Wow, you have done so much, so much over the years.
No, no, thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yeah. Yeah. So, let's take photos.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you for serving us morning. Okay. So, next, I believe we have the postponement of the day. So, we had continued an item from last time, but we will continue to date uncertain. So, I'd like to make the motion to postpone the sister city policy to a date uncertain, to a future date.
Pardon, Mayor, it does stay to update to the April 15th council meeting? Is that, is that, do we have a date certain?
City attorney, do, can we continue to unspecify the date?
You can do that.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Moore's second.
And let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Now it's oral communication.
Yes, Mayor, I will go ahead and read through the provision of this, of this item. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion. The total time for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes. As necessary, the chair may further limit the time allowed to individual speakers or reschedule remaining comments to the end of the meeting on a first-come, first-heard basis with priority given to students. In most cases, state law will prohibit the council from discussing or making any decisions with respect to a matter not listed on the agenda. A council member may however briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by speakers. A council member may also ask a question for clarification, provide a reference for factual information, request staff to report back concerning a matter, or request that an item be added to a future city council agenda in response to public comment. And Mayor, I have eleven requests to speak from in community hall. I see, I currently see no requests to speak virtually.
So, let me mention that I have written a mayor's policy on public comments because we've had the time when we have multiple agenda items and we, the public comment under council procedures menu is thirty minutes. And we do want the meeting to focus on agenda item. When there are too many speakers, I will shorten the time for non-agenda item. And then, but since some, I think some, I would like to also allocate a proportional amount of time to remote speakers so that the, because I think some people just physically cannot attend the meeting either due to their physical condition or they might be caretaker for senior or children. So, by the time, so in the future, by the time the city clerk finished reading the instruction, she would do a first tally of how many in-person and how many remote speakers. And then we will then allocate thirty minutes, at most forty minutes, proportionally to in-person and remote. And I likely will shorten the time so that we can try to accommodate as many non-agenda item speaker, and you are encouraged to submit written communication to the council if you couldn't finish in the allotted time. For agenda items, I would try not to reduce the time, so to give everyone a chance to speak. And the policy would be, all the council members, please hold your question till the end of the public comment so that we can ask, make any allowable, legally allowed, short comments at the end. And this is all posted on the city website.
Yes, the mayor, the policy is posted in the front lobby on the table. It's posted where you collect blue speaker cards here on the dais, and it is also posted on the city website on the new public comments page and also the city council member page.
Yeah, and of course, I might adjust or revise as needed. So now how many?
So we have eleven requests to speak from within community hall. We have one request to speak remotely, so that would bring the time to thirty-six minutes in total. Thirty-three minutes for those.
Allows three minutes each.
If you're allowing three minutes each, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So proceed?
Yeah.
Okay, so first we have Lee Lambert, followed by Sion Bieswass, followed by Rosemary Bieswass. Welcome, Lee.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and city council members and city manager Wu. My name is Lee Lambert. I am the chancellor of the Foothill-D'Anza Community College District. And on behalf of the district, I wish to express my sincere appreciation to the city of Cupertino for their partnership and their strong support of our shared community. Foothill and D'Anza students are already members of the Cupertino community, working, volunteering, and supporting businesses in the community. They are Cupertino's current and future healthcare professionals, auto mechanics, accountants, teachers, engineers, civic leaders, entrepreneurs, and trades folks. They are parents, veterans, and local high school graduates. But many of our students also face basic needs challenges, from food insecurity to transportation, access to affordable healthcare and childcare, as well as housing. Thanks to the strong support of the community, which recognized Foothill-D'Anza as a community asset and treasure, it passed Measure G in 2020. This allowed our district to move forward in recognizing the need for student housing. Student housing and supporting our students build on more than a decade of work by the district, its administrators, its faculty, its classified professionals, and our students. And we formed a group of them to really look at the different options under Measure G to figure out what would be feasible for us to pursue student housing. As a result of this analysis, we looked at off-campus housing options. We looked at options near the campus. We even considered what would an on-campus build-out look like. So, at the end of the analysis, we determined that we would build a choir apartment complex not too far from the D'Anza campus. And we believe this is going to meet our needs. We are currently in the due diligence period, and we look forward, and we believe this is a good investment of the taxpayer dollars in support of the Foothill-D'Anza Community College students and their basic needs. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to give the comment. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Lee. And next we have Sion Bieswass, followed by Rosemary Bieswass, followed by Jaya Pravina.
We are in a group representing McClellan.
You're in a group representing McClellan? Okay, so how many are in your group?
We have ten speakers. Can you come in?
You can all come to the podium, please. So you're consolidating your time, and you may consolidate for up to ten minutes?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
So, we have a presentation and.
Yes, let me queue that up.
And then we have this oral submission document.
Okay, should appear momentarily. So whenever you're ready.
Yeah, sure.
You have ten, up to ten minutes.
Good evening, everyone, and respected mayor and respected council members and city staff. We are here facing a serious risk in the community. Every day, over six hundred kids, K to twelve students walk past by the site proposed by the student housing. We have lost a student at McClellan before in an accident happened still on McClellan Road, right? So now, we are planning to bring more, four hundred unsupervised college students into the same zone, which is shared by four public schools. And this will make ninety-four families and childrens will be displaced. And so, we are respectfully asking the council and the mayor create clear zones for the family and student housing, protect the children who already walked on these roads to these four schools. Act now before any other strategy happens, because in 2018, we lost this kid who biked and in front of the McClellan Terrace Apartments, he died. And that's where the council has acted, and then that's where we have the bike lanes happened after that incident. So, before any incident happens, please act now rather than later.
If you could just let me know when to advance the slides, I will.
The last speaker will go the slide. They have, they will.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Please hold your applause. We would like to, yeah, so that every speaker gets the same support. Thank you.
Hello, honorable city council members.
You could lean a little to the microphone.
Hello, okay, yeah. Hello, honorable city council members. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Part and I live in the McClellan Terrace Apartments. And if I'm forced to leave, I won't be just moving. I'll be losing my community, my friendships, and the stability that helps me thrive. I rely on the nearby schools, which are wonderful, but transferring to different schools I rely on the nearby schools, which are wonderful, but transferring to different schools would disturb my education, sorry, disrupt my education, and education is Cupertino's pride and appeal. All of my friends here who live here could be equally affected, and they could lose their home and their community. I'd have to leave my friends behind and start over, just, which isn't easy. On top of that, increased stress from such a major change can make it harder to focus and do well in school. But this is just more than school. McClellan Terrace is my home. It's where I feel safe and supported with a community that helps me prosper. Losing that would have a lasting impact on my education and well-being. Please consider the effect that this will have on families like mine. Help us keep our homes and community intact, because it's something that we don't want to lose. Thank you.
Good evening, mayors and council members. My name is Sean Ling, and I stand right before you tonight, deeply concerned about the housing, the housing justice issue we're seeing here in a, in a Foothill DeAnza College District plan to purchase McClellan Terrace Apartments. I sincerely hope the city council to take a stand against this displacement of families. When the college board has approved this project, this is just, this is not just a simple property transaction. This is an eviction of 94 families and over 60 children who attend their neighborhood Cupertino school, Lincoln Elementary, Kennedy Middle, and Monta Vista High. These families choose this location so their children can safely walk to school. This community is one of the biggest supporter of walk-by Safe Cupertino program, because all of them walk very safely with their friends in the morning to school. And I'm here asking the city council to protect your own residents. Many of these people are familiar with children of school age, seniors, and essential workers. And this is how you can help us. First, advocate and call to, call to the college board to immediate pause on this project until a meaningful relocation assistance is provided. Second, advocate for alternative student housing solution that don't need to displace families, such as new buildings on DeAnza College's 112-acre campus, or consider a neighborhood foreclosing hotel. Third, we really need to demand transparency and accountability from the college board and the property owners regarding to the true impact on public safeties and traffic on this decision, which is not available anywhere up to today, up to today. And we need leadership that fight for its residents in Cupertino, not just a policy that looks good on paper. Cupertino must stand for housing justice and responsible planning, and we ask you to act now before it's too late. Thank you very much.
Can I have the slide, please? Okay, thank you. Next slide. First of all, I really thanks Mayor Chow and all council members. Giving us the time to talk to you means a lot, not just for me, but all the residents who have come here. You're just seeing a very small part, because everyone works busy, so not everyone is here. We always want you to please come and visit us and see how, how this, you know, the place needs your help today. So, the first thing I want to talk about is Cooper, you know, how are we communicating? The first thing is the transparency in any activity. You are city, you are not, I'm sorry, not saying the board, FHDA, they're doing a transaction, you're not even informing. We come to know by a reporter who comes to our house, knocks and says, hey, you're going to be evicted. That's how we are told. Is that the way we are supposed to build relationship and community in Cupertino? Where is the empathy and transparency that a board should have? Meaningful conversation, meaningful engagement, and say, yes, we need this place. How can we work with you to make sure this is meaningful for everyone? We are not opposing anything. They have money, they can put money, use that money. Are we doing the right usage of that money? So, this is what we come to know, what consultant has put on the website. We came to know because it is recorded. Clearly says, those in 12 months' leave will be asked to leave, others will give in 120. Today, today only, after all those things that has happened, we are being informed that, yes, the McClellan Apartment can continue to stay for one more year because they have students. What after that? We didn't come here to get evicted. Next slide, please. The second problem we want to talk about is, you know, I don't want to give you all the details, it's already there. Where will we go? Look at the numbers that he is talking. Anything which is thousand square foot more with 2BHK for $4,000, we are also vulnerable families. How are we not considered like the students? Yes, we want to work with the students. They are students who are living, they peacefully living, we are peacefully, we coexist together. That is how we want to work with the city and the board. So, if you look at the details, there is no way we can go. You're asking out of 90, 80 families to go outside. What does that mean? It means displacing 33 CUSD, 35 FUSDs who are prospect for the DeAnza Foothill, you know, you are actually cutting your stream. And what will happen? Monta Vista, last year, there was a problem we all know about. The funding will decrease, teacher will be impacted, community will feel bad. We can't feel bad, we have to do something to get it moved ahead. Next slide, please. So, what are we requesting? I think in, as a resident, I can only ask one simple thing: transparency, fairness, and equity in decisions. Please ask those students who were actually surveyed where you want to live, they were never told that you have to actually displace 90-plus families, do that. I know the students who are having hardship will never give hardship to other families. That is not how the work will, tooth for a tooth, eye for an eye will make everyone blind. That's not how we live. We want to have a friend environment where students, communities can work together and live together. The district says we'll support you. How? I don't know. Nobody tells us. Please publicly, you know, I think the problem is, they should publish all the details that they have. Next slide, please. In a matter of time, I'll just cover. One thing that we want to highlight is the taxpayer money. Every taxpayer has agreed to do something, because they had confidence in the board they elected will do the right thing. Aloft is available 40 million, absolutely ready to check in, great DOM situation. Why is it not being used? Why it is not part of the consultant? It is three times lesser than the cost, you know, one speaker came and justified. It's not your money, it's our money. Next slide, please. So, we ask to implement zoning and land use.
That is your time?
Thank you for your time, and really appreciate it. The slides are there, you can definitely use them.
May I just run through the names really quickly, so I don't skip over anyone wishing to speak? Sion, Rosemary, Jaya, Devender, Abmisha, Jaya, Methun, and Sean Lin?
They have the same sad and miserable stories. If you want to repeat and hear them, we can do that.
So, who was in this group? Was that?
Everyone that you spoke are here. You want to hear the same thing, we can repeat ourselves.
Well, you had, you had...
We have the same sad story. We are disciplines, like disciplines.
So, you were in a group, so I assume, so I have you all grouped together, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have San Ar, followed by Rota Frye. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. What you just saw here is not just 94 homes. This is one cohort, one passing generation of a 51-year legacy in Cupertino. This is a property that for 51 years has served our community, taking 51 generations through Monta Vista High. Monta Vista High has produced many, many fine students, but McClellan Terrace is something special. I invite all of you to walk the property. Go there on a weekday evening, see the energy in the property, look at the kids playing with each other, look at the social skills they pick up, living in a community of apartments. It makes you appreciate what the diversity of tenants in our community brings to us. Monta Vista High is a school of the highest level of competition, and McClellan Terrace prepares them for Monta Vista High. So, why do we have this win-loss situation, where we need to replace homes for this cohort and 51 future cohorts, to create homes for an equally deserving group? You're all elected officials, and you can solve problems. I urge you to pick up the phone like I did last time, talk to FHDA. There's other properties, let's make this a win-win. But more importantly, speaking for myself again, I want to say, you need to protect the city's affordable rental housing units. San Francisco did this 13 years ago, 2012. San Francisco Moeny Court Section 317 has very specific restrictions on conversion of land use from rental housing to other use types. And when you go from 94 family units to 322 beds or beyond of unrelated individuals, that is a change of use. And you need to govern that. The city cannot set out of that process. And I urge you to agendize an item today. Before you leave tonight, please put on the city's future agenda with urgency, an agenda item to order, to place on council's agenda a future ordinance for rental housing unit protection that looks at and emulates San Francisco Moeny Court Section 317, that was authored by Scott Wiener, who has been a fierce champion of housing. And please look at what he can do in Cupertino, because this is one affordable housing unit. Once this transition happens, the next 10 could be at risk. And so, we need to protect our affordable housing units. They feed into our school system. Our school system defines Cupertino's valuation. So, please protect not just this generation, but the next 51 years. And we can do it. As a community, we can win. I hope you will act tonight. I'm looking forward to the future agenda items. Please do not leave without putting it on the table. You can act to make sure the city safeguards change of use. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Next, we have Rota Frye. Welcome, Rota.
Hi, good evening. I wish I could be a quarter as eloquent as my predecessors. However, you have a letter from me, a very long letter, five pages. You might have already noticed that the chancellor has left the room. He does not want to hear from us. So, I would urge everybody to go to speak at Public Comment on April 8 in Los Altos Hills at the district office. It's right next to the fire station. So, please go, it's at 6:00 PM. And I assure you, I will be there. I am vehemently in favor of providing an affordable education for our community college We know there's housing insecurity. It is important. However, nobody told me that when I voted for this, that it would mean evicting my neighbors. This is not okay. We've got 67 students who reside there in those 94 homes. So, it's not just about those students. It's about a pipeline into our schools. We're talking about the loss of teacher jobs. We're talking about potentially losing our schools, because we have under enrollment. We want to keep our schools vibrant and active. It's more than these folks, and this is a, this is a big deal. And we're being duped. The college district consultant gave a rosy picture and said, no trouble found, we'll help them relocate, they'll have 120 days, we will help them. So, I did some homework, and I wish that they had done the homework. I did their homework. I shouldn't be doing their homework. They should not be doing their homework, they should have done their homework before voting on this. So, I looked at other available apartments in the area. So, their rents are under $4,000 a month, which is actually bigger than my mortgage. They're two-bedroom, two-bath, over 1,000 square feet. So, I looked for comps in Cupertino. How many, right now? 14. 14 for those 94 homes. So, these folks will be not only displaced from the schools, from those three schools, but also from our district, from CUSD, from FUHD, and guess what? The college district as well. There are some families there who have children, who are going to DeAnza College. This is just not okay. And I'm begging you to read my five-page letter and talk some sense into our board. We voted for you to keep our community good and safe, and I hope you can provide some influence, along with CUSD and FUHD. Thank you.
That is your time. And next, we have one member of the public requesting to speak virtually. That is Citizen. Welcome, Citizen. I see you're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't know. I'll speak. Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and council members. I'm speaking to express concern over reports that this council is considering the termination of City Manager Pamela Wu. If this is true, I urge you to reconsider. Before Wu, the city of Cupertino experienced years of turmoil and high staff turnover, y'all lost public trust as a result. In less than two years, City Manager Wu brought stability, competence, and professionalism to Cupertino's leadership. Her accomplishments are many. Before Manager Wu, the city made little to no progress on the housing element. That has changed, and Cupertino is now moving towards compliance and will not lose local control or face legal action and fines. Before Manager Wu, there was little to no movement on the Valco redevelopment. She moved this project forward while respecting the complexity and emotions surrounding it, adding 2,600 new homes, 900 of them affordable. It sounds like there are some people in this audience that could use affordable housing. Manager Wu led the city through its budget crisis, managing a structural deficit of $6 to $7 million yearly over the next decade. Manager Wu made difficult choices and evaluated many cost-saving options to ensure that the city was able to maintain its essential services. She made sure to tackle the problem head-on, and without her, the city would have kicked the can down the road. Finally, she helped Cupertino settle with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, allowing Cupertino to retain tens of millions of dollars in disputed revenue. Without her leadership and foresight, these funds would not be available. Terminating Manager Wu now without pause would undermine everything she's accomplished. It would send the wrong message to staff, our community, and to the state. Cupertino should not be a place that fires people despite their good work, legal compliance, and fiscal responsibility. Firing Manager Wu here and now sends a message to everybody in Cupertino, resident or worker, that Cupertino does not respect steady, capable leadership. Please put the city's long-term health ahead of short-term politics. Let Pamela Wu do her job. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item?
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. Consent calendar has one item. The, do, let's, let's first hear any public comment.
Yes, anyone wishing to speak on this item, please submit your card or raise your, provide a request to speak online. And Mayor, I see no requests to speak.
Okay, may I have a motion? I'll just make the motion to approve Items 7.
Second.
Second.
Both of them.
Oh, no, JR can have it. JR can have it.
Okay, so I initiate the vote.
Yeah, JR, and we can, if no council question, we can vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Next, we have the action calendar. Item 8 is a memorandum of understanding with four other cities of West Valley for feasibility study to evaluate the potential of any temporary housing or emergency shelter. Do we have a staff presentation?
We do.
We do, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ben Foo, Director of Community Development. With me tonight is our senior housing coordinator, Nikki Vu. Nikki's been with the city for about eight and a half months. So Nikki has a brief slideshow for you, a slide deck for you, going over the item, some background information, and then afterwards, we'll be happy to answer any questions. So, with that, I hand off to Nikki. Nikki?
Thank you, Ben. Good evening, Madam Mayor and the city council. My name is Nikki. The item I have before you tonight is a memorandum of understanding that if executed, would allow the city of Cupertino to join a joint study between ourselves and other West Valley cities to study our collective ability to develop shelter for the unhoused, as well as examining what are the specific needs for the unhoused in the West Valley. My presentation will have three parts to it tonight. The first will be me displaying some data and some background information that helps illustrate the current gap... that helps illustrate the current gaps in services that we have for the unhoused and why completing a study would help us determine how to address these gaps. The second part, we'll be talking about how addressing these gaps will help us fulfill our obligations to the state as well as protect us from emerging legal concerns that are currently being decided in court cases right now. And then finally, taking it back to the content of the West Valley Cities feasibility memorandum of understanding, what would be our commitments as a city if we were to enact it and what would be other cities' commitments as part of the agreement. The first data point I wanted to share is from the point-in-time count taken in 2023. This was a head count of homelessness in both Santa Clara County and the city of Cupertino. As you can see, Santa Clara County has about ten thousand unhoused people, whereas the city of Cupertino has about fifty. It's much smaller. But a striking statistic I wanted to point out is what percentage of them were unsheltered. This means a homeless person identified that has essentially no place to go, no place to rest, no places to receive services or assistance. Seventy-five percent of people that were unhoused in Santa Clara County are unsheltered, whereas a hundred percent of Cupertino unhoused persons are unsheltered. This would mean that there is a need for additional facilities to address unhousedness in the city of Cupertino, because we currently do not have a shelter available to the general public that is available year-round. We do have services. There are vital services. First is the rotating safe car park program, which allows people to shelter in their cars in safe spaces where they would be unbothered. But this is only available at any location for two months at a time, which would make it considered a seasonal shelter. And we also have the Maytree Domestic Violence Women's Shelter, where women and children who are fleeing violence from their homes and thus subsequently become unhoused would be able to find shelter. But this is a special needs shelter, right? This is not available to the general public. For the benefit of this body and the people in attendance, I have on this slide the types of shelters that would be included in this study. We've gone over seasonal and special needs. But all in all, there are seven types. The different in function and form, but more importantly, they address different types of homelessness. The type that you probably are thinking of with the many beds in the big room that takes anybody and gives you an overnight stay, that's called an emergency shelter. But if you really want to focus on exiting people out of homelessness, you would want to add supportive services on-site and also extend their length of stay. That would be called a navigation center. If you have homeless families with children or there's a pandemic, you would want to go for a temporary housing or non-congregate shelter, where there are separated rooms. If you have what is called complex homelessness, where you have an unhoused person that also might have a mental health issue or a substance abuse issue, you would want transition housing. And then finally, for people who are considered chronically homeless, where really they need long-term assistance in order to stay housed, permanent supportive housing would be the option you need. So when considering what type of facility we would need to address the needs of those in Cupertino, we have to understand what are these people's personal struggles, right? What is their personal barrier in order to be housed? And in order to do that, we need to study it. We have to understand them. To start the next part of the presentation, I have a map of the location of shelters in Santa Clara County marked on the screen. The bigger dots represent more capacity. You'll notice that Cupertino is sadly not showing on this map nor any other city on the West Valley. This kind of illustrates the amount of distance, really, we would need to transport people in order to be serviced by other shelters in Santa Clara County. But more than that, this poses certain legal and fair housing concerns, because there is one service that we do use in Cupertino, which is abatement. And there are currently, it's currently in a legal gray area, because there is currently being decided in court cases right now what exactly are the rights of an unhoused person when they are on public land, when shelter is not readily accessible to them? And also, more importantly, what are the rights of the surrounding private property owners when we force unhoused people off of public land onto private property? Can they sue the city for damages? But this is currently being decided right now. And I don't have the answers to that. But even if we were to point to the Santa Clara County Continuum of Care and say, "We, as a city, are also serviced by the rest of the county that also comes with its own concerns, specifically fair housing concerns." In the last housing element cycle, the state made it clear that cities have a duty to affirmatively further fair housing, to take actions to basically break the cycle of segregative or exclusionary housing patterns. And this extends past just affordable housing, but housing services and shelters according to California Fair Housing Law. The way that we can demonstrate that we are a city that affirmatively furthers fair housing in regards to shelters is actually to also use the housing element. We have two strategies that we are committed to, Strategy HE 5.1.1 and HE 5.1.4. And both of them, at their minimum, require the city to adopt zoning changes to allow emergency shelters and low-barrier navigation centers and supportive housing within the city. Our way of demonstrating that we are furthering our commitment to these would be to study the feasibility of developing them. So that takes me to the West Valley Shelter Feasibility Study, what is actually in the MOU and what we would be agreeing to. The point of this study is essentially, as I said, just to study the needs, the feasibility, and how probable it would be to develop temporary housing and emergency shelter for the unhoused in the West Valley. The city of Campbell would be the lead jurisdiction in this MOU. The city of Cupertino, Saratoga, Los Gatos, and Monteserrano would be participating jurisdictions. So what that would mean in terms of share of responsibilities, the city of Campbell would be responsible for procuring, managing, and funding the consultant agreement, which is good city company. And they would be responsible for funding the effort in the amount of ninety-nine thousand dollars. As a participating jurisdiction, Cupertino's responsibilities would be to participate in the study, to provide data to the consultant whenever requested, and to present the findings of the study back to this body upon completion of the study, which we are estimating to be August 2025. Our financial contribution to this would be zero dollars. Given this, the staff recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding for the West Valley Shelter Feasibility Study. And with that, I open it up to questions from the council.
Thank you. Anyone has questions? Five minutes. Councilmember Wa.
Yeah, I have a question for the city attorney and everybody that could answer this question. Post-Johnson versus Grants Pass, do we have to consider the defense of necessity when deciding whether to issue civil injunctions against homeless individuals? And does Grants Pass still hold in place in terms of abatement? And if that does hold, do we have to actually update our policies, procedures, and practices to support that?
Grants Pass was a very important decision for cities. And it does allow cities to abate homelessness on public lands. There may, there still are responsibilities to warn that an abatement will take place. There are other rules around that. But prior to Grants Pass, unless there was a bed available, you were, it was illegal to actually abate homeless people from city property. So that is a major change.
Back to the city attorney. Have other cities in our jurisdiction passed abatement laws that impact us, such as the city of San Jose, city of Santa Clara, city of Sunnyvale?
I have to admit, I'm not familiar with those cities' policies, but I do know other cities in California have done so.
Okay, thank you.
Nice, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I was wondering if we have some information about what kind of funding the surrounding cities have received with regards to homelessness, such as San Jose, how much funding they've received. And perhaps this is something we could, council could ask for as an informational memo to see what San Jose has been receiving for their state and federal funding to support their homelessness program and what the county is receiving versus the local cities. So I think there, that the map that we're being shown is showing where the shelters are. I think that's a good bit of information, but we also need the other information, which is how much funding those cities have been receiving. So if there is some support to have some more information about this. Because once we've completed this study, the next question would be, well, we see this information. What are we going to do to help? And then what funding do we have? And is it equitably, are efforts being equitably conducted? So I think we need more information as well with regards to the financials within the area. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore here.
Yeah, thank you for that report. My question was, the reason for this MOU, I'm assuming, is it's something quite separate from the county involvement in housing, providing a solution for the unhoused. Traditionally, we've been depending on the county. We're looking to the county for beds. And we haven't been very successful, because I guess there's a shortage of beds, and most of the beds available go to larger cities like San Jose. So is this, are you envisioning this as something separate that where the four West Valley cities come up with a separate solution which will either supplement or supplant the county initiative?
So all actions to assist the unhoused would still go through the Santa Clara County Continuum of Care. That's required. What this is about is essentially us regionally determining what would our collective ability be to also come up with our own solutions, right? To supplant that, as you said, right? So it would be yes and, both.
Okay. So I have a question then. As you have mentioned, it's not just the housing. They need a lot of behavioral service and other medical service needs. And the county is the agency that usually has the personnel for all those services. We don't. So would the feasibility study also look at staffing needs in addition to just emergency shelter?
Yes, absolutely. So the county continuum of care and also the Office of Supportive Housing would be two entities that would be consulted for this study. And yes, they would definitely take into account as part of feasibility, the availability of resources and what would be the available distribution of resources from different entities involved, including the county.
And can we add items to the feasibility study? For example, the fiscal role of county versus the city. And I think feasibility also means feasibility financially. Who should be responsible? So I hear, I'm sharing a screen now. On the left is a property tax for Cupertino. The city gets seven cents of the dollar. The county gets thirty-five cents of the dollar. Five times we get. And therefore, they have been providing a lot of these services that the city doesn't provide. And on the right is San Jose. They only contribute twelve cents on the dollar to the county. And so, but then if I ask the county for a list of shelters, and most of the shelters, I think ninety percent of them is in San Jose. A little bit in Mountain View, a little bit in Santa Clara, and one in Palo Alto. Yet none in the West Valley cities. So would the feasibility study look at the collective contribution of all the West Valley cities to the county and look at, are we getting our fair share of the services from the county?
So yes, the feasibility study does look at collective contributions, but it also looks at the availability of resources from the county, what is currently being provided, which also, also what is available to be provided from the county, right? What would be our ask from the county, essentially, as well?
Because the language, as I read now, does not really involve the county except a meeting with the Office of Supportive Service. That's all. The consultant agreement does not seem to even try to get data from the county at all. So it seems the current language is not sufficient to get the information we need.
So the county is involved in this study, right? They are being consulted from the beginning, both Office of Supportive Housing and the Continuum of Care. It's called the West Valley Cities because it's about trying to increase capacity within our specific cities within the county. But yes, as you stated, the staffing, the resources, the services in order to be connected to these shelters would come from the county, and so they would need to be consulted.
Likely, we can use the study data to request more support from the county or financial allocation to the West Valley cities?
We could use the study to do that, if that is the direction of the council, yes.
Okay. Yeah, and thank you for sharing the data that the seventy-five percent of the unhoused is sheltered, but in Cupertino, it's zero percent. And I, that's a very concerning data. I am assuming, I thought the county as a whole. So that's because there is no, the county has built zero shelter in Cupertino.
That's correct.
Yeah. And that's the county's decision. And they have, they get five percent of our property, and five times of our property tax. Yeah, thank you.
Mayor?
Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I was also wondering if the study would be able to compare and contrast the approach to homelessness programs that San Jose has as opposed to the county? I know we see San Jose in the news quite a lot with regards to their efforts, with regards to providing transitional housing and some of their... By the way, when you were referring to the unsheltered, you are not including people who have an RV. Is that correct?
Unsheltered would generally mean they're not connected to any kind of facility where they would receive services, right? So you could be someone in Cupertino that is sleeping in their car, for example, on the street, and that would be considered unsheltered.
Okay, so we have a number, a growing number of individuals that are living in their RVs. So that would be included within the forty-eight?
Yes.
Okay. And then probably the individuals, if they are living in the car, they would probably be included in the safe parking count that's going on there. Okay, thank you. And so would the approach to the homelessness programs be at all analyzed? So I'd like to hear more about what San Jose is doing versus what the county is doing. And then I'm concerned that we are potentially starting a third bureaucracy if the city community tries to do something on their own. And then we're now duplicating efforts and probably not being as efficient as possible. So that's a real concern there.
I'll try to answer the questions in order. So yes, connective supportive services will be analyzed, right? And studied for their own feasibility, right? Because what if the best solution is to increase certain services, right? That's all considered as part of the feasibility study. And yes, comparative analysis for what is effective in surrounding jurisdictions like San Jose would definitely be something to consider. like San Jose would definitely be something to consider, you know, if they're right next to us. And what works for them may also work for us. As for the concern about a third bureaucracy, I should remind everyone that no matter what happens, we are always going to be beholden to the Santa Clara County Continuum of Care. That's where intake will always be done. That's where all the policies and procedures start and end. Because that's the point of it, right? It's a singular continuum. So even though this is trying to focus on developing, you know, new facilities for us, because as we've noticed, we, we don't have any out here, we would still be a part of the continuum of care for the whole county.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to quickly make a correction on what this image I shared earlier. On the right is not San Jose, it's the average Santa Clara county. So city contribute 10% and 12% goes to the county. And I, seems Cupertino is abnormal. Yeah. And we are, we have been talking about shelter. And I think that the policies, I don't know what's, how much time I have left. So the, I think we, there, there has been a, a lack of shelter because, because the priority has been housing first rather than shelter first. And in the past few years, so a lot of funding is diverted to building very expensive subsidized housing, rather than building more shelters at a lower cost. So that's also part that's affecting the low, low availability of shelters. But the MOU is specifically about temporary housing and emergency shelter. So I asked the county personnel, they say, the way they provide emergency shelter when in, in climate weather, is they just add an extra foldable bed to their existing shelter. So they have ability to accommodate more under emergency shelter. Do we have any idea how much they are accommodating under, as emergency shelter versus shelter?
So what you're describing will be called seasonal shelter, right? It's like in the, this particularly like cold seasons and things like that. And emergency shelter is generally something more available year round, right? And, and I think to your point, right, the reason why we want to study more capacity is that, that increase is temporary. And what we would like to see is a, a more permanent increase in capacity for shelters so that people year round can have access to a facility.
Wait, but the MOU is specifically about emergency shelter, not year round shelter? So are, are we only studying emergency shelter?
The emergency, emergency is the name for a shelter that has congregate beds year round and offers overnight stay. It, it's kind of an interesting name in that, like, it's, it's not something that just pops up during emergency. It's, it's, yeah.
Oh, okay. The so-called emergency shelter is the year round shelter beds?
That's correct. The one that's open, as you described, just for like a couple months, that's the seasonal shelter. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
No problem. No problem. It confuses me too sometimes.
Mayor? Try to make this quick. So under roles and responsibilities, it's page 37. For the city of Cupertino, we will assist in data collection and needs assessment, particularly with regards to the target population as requested by the consultant, participate in stakeholder engagement and community outreach efforts as needed, help identify potential funding sources and grant opportunities if needed to support the feasibility study and any further implementation actions, review and provide input on the needs analysis in the feasibility study reports. I'm not sure if that's a staff or a council action. Receive and review the final feasibility report and recommendations before the respective city or town council. So some of this, this kind of looks like a work program item to me that would have a cost associated with it. So I, I don't know if that's been worked up to, to determine that. And if, if someone from staff could remind me if we do have the homelessness item on our work program, that was something that I was asking for, but I'm not sure if it-
It's still on the current list.
Okay. So this, this could be tied into that item with whatever dollar amount that was associated with it, I would assume?
If I understand, that there's currently no fiscal obligation to be part of the report, however, it could certainly be part of the city work program.
Okay. So there, there is a request for, for staff time here, the assisting in the data collection, right? There is, there are things that the city is expected to do to hold up on our end of the, the deal, the, the MOU. So that will generate a cost. You're gonna, you know, there'll be employment cost associated with this. So there is, there is some associated expense for us on that, that'll have to be taken care of within the budget for expenses, right?
So I can comment actually on that. The staff responsibilities and helping collecting that data would mostly be just helping set up the meetings between, you know, the conductors of the city place, Good City, and our kind of service providers. So the, you know, West Valley Community Services, the Maitre, you know, Shelter, people like that. It, it wouldn't be a large staff cost, is what I'm saying. Yeah.
Okay. So I gather these would be in-person meetings in, in different areas of the, within the cities that are involved. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm reading the MOU. I cannot find anywhere where it says the financial resource of the county versus the city and how much is spent, for example, each year, year by the county on building shelter and providing services for the shelter. I did, this, I think these are important in the, for the feasibility study, to know how feasible it is. So I, I cannot see that. So are you sure it's, they are going to study it? Or can Cupertino suggest this to be studied?
We can suggest it, but I would reiterate that everything we do has to be done in conjunction with the county, right? It, it's almost implied that we can't be doing this without the county's involvement. Any feasibility study would take into account, you know, the county's role in helping us provide resources for, you know, any kind of shelter, any kind of facility, or any kind of expanded services.
Okay. That's very, very, thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? If not, we go to public comment. Okay, public comment.
Okay. Mayor, I have possibly three requests to speak from in community hall. I see one hand raised virtually. So that's potentially 12 minutes.
Thank you.
Okay. So Jennifer Griffin, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. First of all, let me commend the cities and West Valley Community Services for bringing up this very important item and trying to get a handle on letting people understand the root causes of homelessness. I have been painfully aware of some of the issues because, as I stated before, my college friend, Bambi Larson, was murdered, I believe it was five years ago, by a gentleman that had very, very severe mental issues and was a Santa, he was homeless in San Jose. Bambi lived in San Jose. I'm very, very keenly aware of a lot of the issues that people who have drug abuse, alcohol abuse, mental illness, et cetera, et cetera, because my brother who passed was a psychologist for county of Santa Sloss and Modesto City, worked with the youth at risk, and went to court with him over many, many situations. My sister-in-law, who is widowed and lives in the river area of Modesto right now, has a large homeless encampment with drugs, mental health issues adjacent to her property on a PG&E site. They routinely set things on fire. They have set her fence on fire. She's had to call the police many times. During the pandemic at Stevens Creek and 280 in Calvert, we had a large homeless encampment on the corner that we were forced to witness. We had a man that could not keep his clothing on. He would drop his pants so that people at the apartment complexes, Shadow Oaks and, and Sage would see him routinely dropping his pants when traffic went by. It was disgusting. Now, I feel very strongly for these people, but we were forced for three years to witness this. I have gone to all the meetings that the county had for the affordable housing, supportive housing, or whatever's being built back there at Valco. I'm hoping we're not going to get supportive housing back there because they need to have the resources. I'm also concerned because the Agnew's land was sold years ago. This is where a lot of the, the folks would have been housed, et cetera. And also, the Sunnyvale Armory was sold. My brother used to be, he was in the National Guard. He used to go there. That was seasonal housing. There's housing on it now. I believe the Armory in San Jose was sold too. We have to, I don't want Cupertino to become the planting area for this. I'm not going to be yelled at and told me-
Thank you, Jennifer. That was your time.
I don't want that. Cupertino needs a fair place at the table.
Next, we have Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, council members and staff. I'm glad that you are looking at a regional addressing this issue on the west side because the map showed there isn't anything. And I'm hoping these cities are small, and together, maybe you can get the leverage with the feasibility, the results of the study to lobby the county to put resources on the west side. I'm hoping that kind of information could be the result of this study. I question the zero cost to the city for the feasibility study because you have outreach, you've got data collection, you've got review. And the timeline, now it's April. So you've got about three and a half months, and the city kind of closes down in August. So it's got to be crunched a little more. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And we have one member of the public requesting to speak virtually. That is San R. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and Cupertino council members. Firstly, I want to congratulate Nikki on an excellent presentation. I want to congratulate Director Fu for mentoring and obviously, you know, training and empowering his people to speak. I thought this was a fine presentation by staff. And I encourage more department heads to continue to bring out the talent of our staff and give them opportunities to speak and empower them. Having said that, I, I do think these bodies take on a life of their own. I have attended a number of the sessions of the Stevens Creek Corridor Vision Study, which is also a cross-agency body that is doing a study across several cities and the county as well. And the challenge with these is they take a life of their own, and the projects then turn into funding needs that then follow. And there are a number of people that get crashed some of these meetings, attempting to influence when they do not have skin in the game in terms of current residents in the city. And so it becomes challenging to be the outlier once you're part of the group. It also becomes difficult to then go back to the county for resources now that this is a broader organization or broader body of West Valley cities that are trying to do something. So there is the challenge of, we do not have the budget nor do any of these smaller cities, and it is not possible to fund this to the extent that the needs exist. The county itself needs to be the central place where we can pool resources to make the necessary investments to help in one central organization, which is the county. And we cannot fragment that. And so I urge you to congratulate Nikki for a great session, but vote against the staff recommendation and not accept the staff recommendation, because we need to, all five of you need to use your relationships with the county board supervisors to really get Cupertino its fair share of housing. We also do not have a housing problem for these resources, for these people necessarily. We have a problem where they refuse to accept the resources that are offered. And so how do we get past that? That's something that we need to work through. So I urge you to use your relationships across these agencies and help these people out because they do need help. The solution is in more open positions for staff and more bodies and more meetings and more months and years spent in these meetings and studies and consultants. The solution is you people picking up the phone and solving problems and really getting out there, talking to people outside yourselves. We have problems needing solving, and that is cross-agency talk. And the council members that will do that are the problem solvers for Cupertino. So please do not make any investment in this, and instead, use your rolodex and let's get this going. Let's get help for these people. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item?
Yeah, thank you. First, a little correction. I think this, this was not brought up by West Valley Community Services. This is brought up by Campbell, but then we do have a monthly meeting of West, of West Valley cities, which is Campbell's, Saratoga, Los Gatos, Montesereno, and Cupertino. So just wanted to clarify that. And, you know, we bring it back to the council. Any other comments on this item? Or are we ready for a motion? Councilmember Moheen?
Yeah, I move we authorize the city managers to execute the MOU for the West Valley Cities feasibility study.
I'll second that.
Yeah. Vice Mayor?
Okay. Thank you. So I, sorry to add one more question, but I'm concerned about the, the ability for this council to be having that cross-city communication. Will this MOU address that so that we are not siloed in Cupertino and it's simply staffed, speaking to the staff of other cities?
So I'm just trying to get clarification. Your concern is you want to be able to speak to electeds in, in other cities about this?
Well, how is this, how is the, the cross-city communication going to be handled with this consultant?
Oh, we would have standing monthly meetings essentially to kind of keep track of how far the study is going, what data needs or needed to be provided from each of us. We actually have been meeting monthly to continue this, all the housing staff from all the different cities.
Okay. And so where's the check-in with the council so that we're, we're kept informed?
So this would be administrative actions, part of our city work plan, as well as fulfilling our housing element goals. If we need to take this to this body to authorize new actions or legislation, I think that would be the appropriate time?
If, I mean, I, I think our thought also that is that since this unhoused item is part of the city's work program or on the list, we will be able to provide check-ins of this particular item and how this relates to that particular item. So you will have, the city council will have up-to-date information before any action is being taken.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Fu.
That all said, if council members wanted an update from staff, I would presume we could simply ask for one, right?
Yes, of course.
Exactly. Okay. So if we needed information, there's a mechanism for getting it as, as things move along. Also, just wanted to clarify, we're not envisioning any, anything as formalized as the Stevens Creek Corridor Vision Study. This is just a staff-to-staff communication as we get through the feasibility study, yes?
That's correct.
Okay. So there's, there's not going to be a large number of public meetings and things of that nature. This is you guys doing your job.
Yes, this is five housing staff from five cities that meet monthly.
Great. Okay. I just want to make sure everyone understands what, what it is we're doing. We're trying to figure out what we can do. That's the purpose of a feasibility study. Thanks.
So are they providing any check-in to the Campbell City Council?
There would be a check-in when the study is completed, right? When the results of the study are completed to all of the cities. As part of like the development of the study, that's just work right now on like the, the data gathering stage. And then the next would be moving on to kind of consult, oh, sorry, stakeholder interviews. But as far as like updates to council, there wouldn't need to be one until the study is completed.
So their MOU says it started, I think, last November, and that it will end when, I think, June, right?
Around August.
Around August. But then they are only coming to the different cities around February or March. So only a few months. So what they have done up to now?
So up to now would be kind of like the demographic and data gathering stage. And for that part, you know, the ACS and the census data is actually normally done at like a county or regional level. So it, it wouldn't add any additional time, really.
So it, it wouldn't add any additional time really to add the surrounding cities for that because you're already kind of gathering data at that level. The part that would add more time is the part that is going, they're going into during the summer where they add the stakeholder interviews. And that is the kind of the portion that's going forward next. So that is why, you know, adding the cities now doesn't necessarily push back the, the deliverable dates.
Who are their stakeholders?
So any of the nonprofits that provide services to, Life Moves, West Valley Community Services, Maitre, all those kinds of organizations, Abode, Path, yeah.
Okay, so, so if they have started in November and I was, I think my concern is that from the MOU, it doesn't have any language that they will collect data from the county, including financial investment from the county in shelters and the supportive services. So are, they haven't done any of that yet now. How am I to know that they will do that in the next few months after they have added all the cities?
The MOU does identify the county office of supportive housing and the continuum of care as stakeholders to be consulted for this study. So they would, it is, it is listed that they would talk to these organizations. And as I previously kind of stated, any kind of expansion of services, development of facilities, it would require the county's involvement, right? Because the county continuum of care is the body that which.
I know you say that, but it doesn't say that in the MOU.
I understand, but for any kind of service regarding the unhoused, it's, it's required by law, right? It must go through the continuum of care. So it's, it's almost implied, right? That they would be involved at all stages.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So looking at the, it looks like the original agreement with Campbell, it looks like they, it was entered into on the fifteenth day of December twenty twenty four. It's just kind of interesting that they started the work in, in November and here it is April. They're, they're bringing us on. The, the dates are kind of interesting because it says in our MOU that the feasibility study will begin November twenty twenty four and will be completed August twenty twenty five. I'm kind of wondering if, if that August date's really attainable or if we're going to see this slip because we're, we're actually coming on board several months after they allegedly started. So I, I don't know if you have some comments on that. If you really think that the August date's going to happen, I'm curious to know.
The distribution of work activities, there's, there's phases, right? The first being kind of like the demographic statistic, kind of like studying. And that is done mainly through looking at census and ACS data, which is collected at a regional level. So it, it doesn't add any additional time basically for those activities that Cupertino joins later, right? Because it's already collected at that level. And the activities that are going to be done in the summer are the ones that would add additional time. But as we said, we're joining now. So I don't think that us signing this MOU would push back deadlines.
Okay, and did you, did Campbell want to have all these other cities involved when they first signed their agreement?
Yes, our collective capacity is greater than us individually, right? Because we have leverage together to do things at a, at a regional level. So yes, the plan was to create something for us at a regional.
Okay, so kind of out of curiosity, I'm wondering why they didn't do all that back in December? Why, why was there a lag?
They needed first, I guess, to identify, you know, a consultant to do the study before bringing us onto it. So there, there's, there's steps that had to be taken administratively.
Okay, well, they did identify one, the Good City Company back in December, so they had them. Okay, all right, thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Wong.
A question for staff and look, I didn't, I should have said, really wonderful presentation. I know you did a lot of work here. Question for you. Are you aware of resolution number thirteen two six one from the city of Campbell? That's the one where they adopted their housing element. And in that housing element, they were asked to get into agreement to actually do a feasibility study with the West Valley Cities. This is part of their housing element requirement. And it's also funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. My only question here is, is there still funding in that ARPA Act for them to actually conduct the survey? And then the second question I have is, this is led by the city of Campbell because it's required for their housing element and they're pulling us in. Is that correct?
So, yes, the, as part of their housing element, they, they committed that ARP funds for this specific use. And so that is the funding that is being spent for this study. And as much as it is their housing element requirements that they do this study, it is also kind of ours, right? As I mentioned, we are also committed in our housing element to studying things like shelters and transitional housing. At, at a minimum, allowing it by zoning, right? But to demonstrate to the state that we are furthering our commitments, we could essentially use this as to take credit, right? And that would help us with meeting our state requirements.
But to be clear here, we weren't, this is not a requirement for us in getting certified for a housing element. This was required for city of Campbell, correct?
It was required for city of Campbell, yes. And it also helps us just coincidentally.
Well, it does help us. It's not required. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, one, one final question is San Jose is not in, is not going to be consulted, but they are making a great effort to build a lot of shelters and, and much more capacity than the county. So how, how would this relate, relate to the San Jose's effort in building shelter?
That's a great question. So on the graph with the map, with all the shelter locations, right? We noted that all the shelters are basically in the city of San Jose. And the point of the study, right, is to try to study the feasibility of developing shelter over on our side of the county. And so collectively, what we're trying to do is our five cities together, seeing what is our combined capacity for that. San Jose does play a part in the Santa Clara County continuum of care, but adding them would kind of defeat the purpose, right, of the study, which is to bring one over here as opposed to one where they already all currently are.
But, so those shelters in, located in San Jose, they were built by the county.
Correct.
And they are usually need to be built in a place where there is transit support. And that is where the West Valley City doesn't have a lot of.
I think that's, that's what a feasibility study will identify for us.
Okay, so it will also, it says it won't identify location for shelters, but it will identify likely criteria for shelters, for shelter locations?
Yes, all of the cities would be part of the combined area of study, right? So the location, if there would be determined, you know, like, let's say, if this, let's say the study does decide that there is feasibility to develop a shelter, right? The area of study of locations considered would be our five cities in the West Valley. That, that is the point of us doing this study together. And that's why including a city like San Jose, which already has all of the shelters, is kind of defeating the purpose of it.
Okay, anyone else? We just vote? Yeah.
It's called a question.
Yeah, let's vote.
Motion carries with Wong voting no.
Should we take a break? Yeah, good idea. We started at five o'clock. So we'll take a five-minute break. Eight thirty-eight, yeah.